You're listening to KCXU LP ninety-two point seven FM on your dial in San Jose, California.
Welcome to our one hour weekly radio town hall series with discussing the COVID-19 pandemic with Santa Clara County Supervisor Dave Cortezzi for District Three. And we'll introduce him shortly. First, my name is Belinda Casado. I'll be your host for today's radio town hall meeting. And I, of course, like you, am sheltering in place and working from home. And believe it or not, we're broadcasting as we did last week from my home in Amadon Valley, which is kind of exciting and neat. So, yeah, going forward, you're listening to KCXU LP ninety-two point seven FM radio. We're a nonprofit community radio station here in San Jose, California, and amplify diverse voices by providing local opportunities to tell stories and share experiences and strengthen our connections to each other in the community. So I'm happy to be a part of this broadcast and a part of the station. And our radio call letters to explain KCXU LP, the initials LP refer to the low power, which is why some of you may be listening to our broadcast on our website, which is KCXUCOVID19.org. And we encourage you to do that if you're getting a low signal. Once again, KCXUCOVID19.org. You'll click on Radio Town Hall Live and you'll be able to follow us. And it'll be rebroadcast throughout the next week or so, multiple times during the day, so that you can get your information and keep in touch with us. And to contact us by phone to call into today's program, the number is four zero eight six three four eight zero eight six. Once again, four zero eight six three four eight zero eight six. Or you can text, which is another number, and that's four zero eight four eight zero seven eight three three. Once again, four zero eight four eight zero seven eight three three for text messages only. And today's been another busy week in the news, and we would like to introduce Supervisor Dave Cortezzi, who I am proud to say that we share something in common. We're both local natives, local San Joseans, so that's interesting. But by way of his professional career, Supervisor Cortezzi has served for over a decade with four years as Board President for the County of Santa Clara. And before joining the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors, he served eight years as a San Jose City Council member and two years as Vice Mayor. He was a trustee for the San Jose Eastside Union High School District for eight years. And his lifelong dedication to public service and being a champion for the community has translated to an impressive record of public service. So welcome Supervisor Dave Cortezzi. It's good to have you back. And at our town hall, radio town hall meeting, we'd like to thank you for your leadership. And before we begin, I just wanted to ask you how you're doing in these days of all the changes of the COVID-19 pandemic. How are you and your family doing?
Well, I'm doing fine. My family's doing fine. And I think, as we discussed before, I have a large extended family here. I'm, you know, my father, my grandfather was an immigrant to this country on my paternal side. And I have a large maternal side of the family as well. So we're happy that, you know, thus far, everybody in the, you know, along the bloodlines is healthy. We, you know, we have friends who've suffered some grief, and we've certainly had some, you know, extended family members that have experienced, you know, some issues with COVID health-wise. And, you know, that's always the first thing that all of us are trying to account for every day, take inventory every day. How is the family? How are our relatives overall? So I hope yours are well, too. And, you know, the rest of it, for me, is just the, you know, the workload and all the activity right now, which we'll talk about in a minute. But I hope your family is well, too, Belinda. And I thank you and Manu for hosting us here today.
Oh, you're welcome. It's our pleasure. And there are some questions that we received in advance. So before we get to those questions from our constituents, from our listeners, we'd like to ask you, what is new on the COVID-19 pandemic front? And what do Santa Clara County residents need to know?
Well, there's always a little bit of good news, it seems, and not so good news. You know, in some respects, every day seems to be like that these days, at least for the past seven weeks. And maybe that's just life. But we, we're happy to one degree that our offices help donate over fifteen thousand masks, you know, the N-95 masks, which are used by our medical workers, along with a whole bunch of gowns, gloves, and mattresses for our unhoused community. There's a lot of advocates out there trying to help and address the needs of the eight thousand who are unsheltered in our community right now who are homeless. We've also raised directly thirteen thousand dollars for protective equipment for Valley Medical Center Foundation. If people are interested in helping out with that, they can easily donate. And there's a website. We could probably get to that later. But there's a way to do that online, of course. And, you know, probably the most important thing that's happened the last few days is that the county's ramping up its COVID-19 testing. Thanks to some public-private partnerships, a couple of them are focused on high-risk populations in specific communities. For example, not far from where I live, there's a new testing site at James Lake High School in San Jose, right along White and Elm Rock. And also Christopher High School in Gilroy is another testing site that has opened up. Those both are public-private partnerships. The county, the school district, and a private provider are providing about a hundred and thirty-two tests a day at those sites. And then there's another testing site that opened up at the Police Activities League Stadium in San Jose, which is, I think a lot of people know where that is. But it's where you see the lit-up fields at night, right near where One-O-One and Six-Eighty cross each other. You enter that facility through a side street off of King Road, but it's Police Activities League and right at the stadium facility there.
Is that Emma Push Park?
No, but it's close, it's close by. The P-N-L-
It's off Two-Eighty on the freeway, right? You can see it when you go over Two-Eighty, Eighty-Five or something?
Exactly. Emma Push would be on one side. You could see the Emma Push Park because they have gardens. They have vegetable gardens.
Yes.
That's on one side of the freeway if you happen to be traveling on the south side of the overpass. If you're on the north side of the overpass, you'll oftentimes see stadium lights. And those stadium lights are where the testing facility is at Police Activities League Stadium. And if you want information on how to get to any of those places, either call my office at four oh eight two nine nine five zero three zero. That's the office of Dave Cortezzi. Or there's a great website we've talked about before. It's at SCCG-O-V, I'm sorry, scratch that. If you have your pen out, it's SCCPHD, like Public Health Department dot org. SCCPHD.org. There, you can get an extensive list of testing sites, including the three I just mentioned, but a lot more also. So we're happy.
And Supervisor Cort, I'm sorry to interrupt Supervisor Cortezzi, just to let you know that we have those two bits of information, your phone number for your office, and the Santa Clara County Public Health Department website on our KCXUCOVID19.org website. So if people go there, they'll get the information for you and both the link to Public Health Department locations. Now, regarding the testing, are we able to, how does one, if they're concerned, if they have a loved one or they themselves are not feeling well, how, do they need a doctor's note to go to the testing site? How does that work?
Yeah, generally, you should have a doctor's referral. Some of the testing sites, for example, the one at the fairgrounds, at the county fairgrounds, which is operated by a company called Verily. Something requires you to sign up online, and then you can just drive in, and you don't even have to get out of your car again at the fairgrounds. But preferably, people should be talking to their doctor first, because it's important to go over the common, you know, to see if you actually have some of the common symptoms. There's a variety of them, and sometimes you could have just two of these symptoms, and you may need to be tested. And other times, you don't. And it's really important to try to talk to a doctor first. In addition, you want to do that by phone. Don't just walk into the doctor's office, because if you are contagious, you know, they're not, people in the waiting room aren't going to be prepared to distance from you. It's going to be a problem. So call your doctor, try to get a referral. If that doesn't work, you can go to one of these websites we're talking about and get clear instructions on how to proceed. You know, either mine, which is SupervisorCortezzi.org, or the KCXU website, which you just mentioned. But if you're over fifty and you have symptoms, fever, cough, shortness of breath, or even sore throat, tiredness, muscle or body aches, headaches, confusion, loss of sense of taste or smell. They're now saying if you have any two of those and they're lingering and they're severe, you should be calling your doctor right away, especially if you're over fifty.
Right. And chills, too, they were saying, body aches, chills. So any two of those. And those are listed on the Public Health Department site as well, I would imagine.
Yes. And if you want to just, if you don't like going to websites and you're experiencing these problems right now and you're listening to this town hall, one of the things you could do is dial this toll-free number. This is the Santa Clara Valley Medical Center hotline. It's one eight 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 three three four one thousand.
Yes, right, right.
Eight 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 three three four one thousand. It just has to speak to an advice nurse. Don't go down there. Don't go to the emergency room or urgent care without an appointment. Call that number first, and they'll tell you what to do. And that way, you'll be protecting, you know, not only others, but your own family and friends, especially if somebody needs to take you down there.
Very good. Okay. And just as a station ID, you're listening to KCXU LP FM on your radio dial. We're ninety-two point seven. And we have Supervisor Dave Cortezzi on the line. If you'd like to speak with him, you can call him at four zero eight six three four eight zero eight six. Or text four zero eight four eight zero seven eight three three to ask your questions regarding the COVID-19 pandemic. And if he doesn't know, he'll be sure to find answers for you, right Supervisor Cortezzi?
Exactly right. I never claimed to have all the answers, and usually, at least one member of the audience can stump me on something. But we can find out for you tonight or first thing tomorrow, so that's easy.
Okay, very good. Okay, now, for the, for Santa Clara County residents, we've talked about testing, we've talked about locations, symptoms, et cetera. And we're, according to national and local or state news, we're going into a phase two program. What does that mean for us in Santa Clara County?
Would you repeat that for me again regarding the-
Oh, yes. Yes, we're going, so the federal and state leaders, our Governor Newsom announced that we're going into a phase two. And I wanted to know, for Santa Clara County residents, those of us who stayed and sheltered in place and who may be working from home and or looking forward to our office or business opening up again, that we can go back to work, what do we have to look forward to? I know it's a slow rollout they're talking about, but how realistic is that for our county? We're sheltering in case we know until the end of May, so June first, we might be looking at a different type of San Jose or Silicon Valley?
I think for sure we'll be looking at some differences and changes come June first. What the governor has said in the meanwhile is that as early as tomorrow, he will allow, under the statewide orders, counties, especially rural counties, to open up, you know, certain types of businesses, so long as they follow strict guidelines, you know, in terms of how they do that. I think what he's really saying is, you know, look, in some very rural places, we just don't have the human compaction, you know, the population and the proximity of people in congregate facilities or congregate situations where we need to worry about the risk as much as we do in metropolitan areas like the Bay Area or San Diego or Los Angeles, for example. So he's trying to allow some flexibility for some of these counties to tailor their own approach. Now, we've got to be very, very careful with that, because as we saw just in the last twenty-four hours here in Santa Clara County, we have five more deaths and seventeen more cases. So that's not, those are not extraordinarily high numbers like we've seen in New York City. But, you know, those five deaths are significant. Those are deaths that we would not have other, you know, other than for COVID, if it were not for COVID. So, again, when you keep adding these numbers up, and you're getting into, you know, over three hundred going on four hundred deaths just in the last seven weeks in the Bay Area, it's very evident to the governor that many, many places and many businesses, like restaurants or salons or lounges or other kinds of businesses where people are normally put in close proximity to each other, are either going to have to radically change the way they do business or they're just going to have to, you know, stay shut down for a while. But he's going to allow some flexibility, and we'll see what that looks like tomorrow. I believe he'll make an announcement tomorrow.
Okay, at his twelve o'clock briefing that he does?
Yes.
Yeah, that's always very interesting to listen to. Okay, so we have a text message that came in from Gina in South San Jose, and she's asking about police presence and activity and something about speeding or speeders on Highway eighty-five. And I guess, so just not only answering her question, but how is the police department doing? How are they faring in all of this, in our COVID response?
So far, the police department and the sheriff's department have not had significant numbers of COVID-positive or infections, which is really important, obviously. We don't want to lose the police force or the sheriff's deputies, or firefighters, for that matter. There have been some cases where we've had clusters of infection break out in firehouses. But they've stayed contained within those groups. As most people know, those firefighter cohorts live together, and they don't, you know, typically intermingle with, you know, with their peers and other fire stations. So one good thing is, at least the virus is staying contained, you know, in those firehouses where it was found. As far as, you know, speeding, traffic, crime, property crimes or theft crimes, if you're seeing, if you're seeing more of that, I think it's less related to COVID as it is to just, you know, a general challenge, especially in San Jose. You said it was South San Jose. San Jose's police department has been challenged with understaffing of about four to five hundred officers for the last five years now. And, you know, they have had some issues with trying to respond quickly to property crimes. But generally speaking, crime is down. They say that the incidence of crime is down about sixty percent in some, you know, in most areas of San Jose. So feel free to let us know if you, if you see a trend out there. If you're a listener, like the one from South San Jose, let's suppose there's loitering, which shouldn't be happening right now, of course. Let's suppose there's, you know, raucous parties, which shouldn't be happening right now, because people are supposed to be sheltering. You can always call my office at four oh eight two nine nine five oh three oh. And, you know, there is a hotline we can give you or we can call it for you if you're unwilling to do it yourself. And make sure that public safety goes out there and breaks that up or checks it out, or at least warns people. But violating these orders in many cases is actually a misdemeanor, so the police will enforce it if they're pressed to do so.
Okay, very good. That's good to know. And I'm glad that they're, that the activity, the crime activity is down. That's always a good sign, of course. Okay, so I have another question from Fatima on the east side, and she's wondering, she has a small business, a hair salon, and she's wondering when she can get back to work. And you were saying just minutes ago that that looks like it may, it'll have to be business different than usual.
Yeah, I hope soon, because I need a haircut myself. And I know there's a lot of other people like me, so.
True.
It is, I think, you know, if it's any consolation, Fatima, I think that the people who maybe miss the most right now are, you know, salons, hairstylists, and barbers. You know, it's something a lot of us, you know, sort of take for granted, and, okay, I have an appointment, I'll get down there, however often we go. And all of a sudden, you can't do that, and it's not something people, most people will, are willing to try to do themselves. So we hope it's, that, you know, that will change. I'm interested in working with people who own salons and stylists, barbers, to try to better understand, do they think, you know, whether they think they could help us write some rules that might dramatically reduce the risk. Maybe it's that you can only have one person in the shop at a time, and nobody's, nobody's sitting around. You know, that's very contrary to how we're used to doing it. You know, I usually learn more about what's going on in the neighborhood by going down to get my haircut, because I sit around and talk to everybody. You know, we might not be able to do that for a while, and we may have to have, you know, one person enter at a time. Maybe different types of, you know, sanitization in terms of, you know, sterilizing things, sanitizing things. That may require appointments to be spread out so that people can clean their shop literally after every cut. You know, they might have to charge a little more for it, and maybe people would pay for that. I don't know. But I just want Fatima and others listening to know that if you're in that business and you want to get together with some of your colleagues or competitors, and I'd be willing to, you know, have a Zoom call or a conference call and figure out together, you know, how we could submit some, maybe some protocols and some rules to the public health officer for her to consider that might help open things up sooner rather than later. Because, again, you know, it's about as close to an essential activity as you could get for a lot of people. But it's just unfortunate that the traditional business model generally puts so many people close together, including, you know, the hairstylist and the client. So we've got to figure that out.
Okay, and I have, excuse me, a message from a caller that says, are there any current data on hotspots in Santa Clara County? This is from Anna in San Jose. Any current data where hotspots are located in Santa, in Santa Clara? I guess, I mean, county-wide in San Jose.
Anna, this is a great question you're asking about hotspots in San Jose or Santa Clara County. You can go to the, to the Public Health Department's website, and you will get some data there that's demographic, by ethnicity, and also city by city. I have, and that website is SCCPHD.org. I will tell you, though, that I have been upset that the Public Health Department and the County Executive's Office have not put more detailed information out about where clusters are. I think that if they're going to tell us to avoid others that are infected, to avoid contact, then they should be telling us if there are hotspots that we should be avoiding. It's as simple as that. I don't want to hurt anyone's neighborhood or anyone's local seven-eleven store. But, you know, if there's a, if there's been a two dozen cases around a certain block or a certain shop, I think we're all better off to avoid it for two weeks so things can calm down and make less people sick. So I've been pushing really hard to get that data. Some of the other counties do a better job of that, especially in Southern California, and I'll keep pushing really hard. Every once in a while, of course, sadly, we get a breakout in, an outbreak, I should say, in a nursing home or a fire station or someplace like that, and you can kind of figure out where that is. But, like I said, unfortunately, the county is not so far putting out data on a block-by-block basis, and I think we should.
Okay, very good. And, you know, getting back to Fatima, that was a good question from Rose. And Fatima's question's about small business opening up and hair salon and your, your idea of creating some sort of conversation around protocols, and they would know that's a great idea. But I'm wondering, you referred to the near-distant future. How, just a reality check, what are we looking at in terms of being in this new normal of protecting ourselves from possible outbreak in the future? Is it six months, one year? What, what do you think? And what are you told Supervisor Cortezzi about that?
Well, as recently as yesterday at the Board of Supervisors meeting, we were told that it would be optimistic to think that there'd be either antibody testing or a vaccine even in eighteen months. That it might be, it might be two years, it might be two cycles of this. Think of flu cycles, where you have a flu and then it comes back seasonally, year over year. Um, this, the, the difference with the flu is they can usually put a vaccine together the first year that starts to slow everything down dramatically the second year, and then they adjust the vaccine again for the third year. And pretty soon, you kind of have it under control. Here, they're, they're really not sure how to get, how to put the vaccine together. I'm talking with the medical professionals. That's not just in our county, that's worldwide. And, and so as long as there is no vaccine, and there hasn't been an antibody test that will tell you if you've had the virus or not, um, and that's been very delayed. Therefore, you know, no, no testing of, of that nature, no vaccines. Um, the fact of the matter is that we're, we're kind of sheltering, limiting our activities, changing our business models, as you were just alluding to. Co- you know, we're having this conversation about new ways to do business, new protocols, new ways to enter and exit the barber shop, you know. This is all, all what we have to look forward to for the next few months if we wanna get the economy going again. We're gonna, I think we're gonna have to be willing to, to change our game. Um, and
Right.
it's hard, you know, change is always hard. I don't wanna do it. I, it's, it's unfair. We're all victims here. We're all victims because we had a beautiful life eight weeks ago, nine weeks ago, none of this was happening. Um, and now all of a sudden, we're being told you might have to, you know, change the way you do business as a customer and, and as a business person. Um, but the worst problem is, Belinda, that each business has its, comes with its own set of, of challenges when you're trying to have a conversation about protocols. Think, think of dentists, for example. Um, that's just a very complex thing to try to figure out. You know, you can have one door in, one door out, but think about what happens in a dentist's office and the dentist will be first, the first to tell you, it's extremely, they're extremely vulnerable, uh, to passing on the virus. I mean, the virus comes from saliva.
Mm, yeah.
You know, basically, and that's what they're dealing with, okay? They're dealing with, uh, you know, having to work on, on people's teeth in, in your mouth. So, um, everything from not just how you walk in the door and how you exit, um, but, you know, how do you deal with people and protect them well enough, you know, even the receptionist, as people are coming in and out and you have what they call aerosols, you know, you have the virus essentially in the air, um, in, in every hygienic room in the dentist's office. You've gotta get rid of that, uh, virus before the next customer comes in. And you don't even know who had it because people come in without symptoms. So, some, you know, that's a lot more complicated
That is.
than a barber or a hairstylist, and that, that's a lot more complicated than a construction site. On a construction site, you can just tell people, stay six to ten feet apart, don't talk to anybody, hammer your own, hammer your own nails. Come in the gate, go out the gate, don't have lunch with anybody.
Right.
You know, take your temperature every day. These are things that, that don't help you that much in a dentist's office. And, and once again, I mean, who wants to go without dental care? It's critical, you know.
Right, or
It's very critical.
True, or I, I would imagine if you're, um, if you're like an optometrist, you have to deal with people very closely, looking at their eyes, checking their eyes, making sure the glasses fit, et cetera, et cetera. And so you're gonna have close contact there too. There's a lot of businesses that, that now that you really think about it, um, you know, can impact, um, you know, or have impacted our lives that, that we just never really thought much about before, um, what we, uh,
Some of the most, excuse me, I didn't mean to cut you off, but some of the most, uh, some of the most, um, routine, you know, professional and social visits that we're used to can actually be the most risky now. And that's what's also hard for people to grasp. I mean, what could be more routine than going to a high school basketball game or a football game or watching your kid play Little League? That's like, that's the American way, you know, and, and, you know, to think that just going and, and sitting next to twenty-five other people in the grandstand, you know, at your, at your kid's Little League game, um, can suddenly result in an outbreak or a cluster of twenty-five infections, or if grandma's there, she might be particularly vulnerable, or someone with asthma, or someone with diabetes.
Right.
Actually dying from that. Um, and, and who would think that that's a risky endeavor? And that's why people are frustrated. I know people are frustrated because they're thinking, I, I want my Little League games back, I want my soccer back, I want my kids to have their activities back. And, you know, it, 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 the virus, like I said, has victimized all of us. Um, and it's even made your board of supervisors relatively powerless because, as I've said before, the state has empowered the public health official with this radical authority, and she gets to tell all of us what to do, even the elected officials.
Oh, Dr. Sarah Cody.
That's her. She is, um, she is in charge, um, of just about everybody's life, you know, and not just the two million people here, but obviously she's influencing all the public health officials in the Bay Area, which is seven, seven million people. And I think the governor's watching what she does very closely, which means she's influencing forty million people. That's a lot of authority for one person, and I'm sure, I'm sure it's a big burden on her shoulders.
Wow, that's a, a, a new way to look at it, too. Um, okay, let me let you know that you're listening to KCXU LP FM ninety-two point seven, and thank you for listening. We're, we're with, uh, supervisor Dave Cortezzi, District Three Supervisor, who's, uh, giving us, um, information on COVID nineteen and the pandemic in Santa Clara County. And we're gonna be rebroadcasting this throughout the week, so if you need to get ahold of supervisor Cortezzi, uh, you can reach him at his office, and his, uh, local line is four oh eight two nine nine five zero three zero. And he'll be able to answer questions or someone on his staff, uh, that you may have if you missed something in the radio town hall that we're doing now. It'll also be on KCXUCOVIDnineteen.org website, and just click on Radio Town Hall Live in the left-hand corner. Uh, if you'd like to reach us today, you can call us at four oh eight six three four eight zero eight six. Once again, four oh eight six three four eight zero eight six, or text a question to supervisor Cortezzi at four oh eight four eight zero seven eight three three. Once again, for text messages only, four oh eight four eight zero seven eight three three, and we thank you for that. We're, um, on the air with supervisor Cortezzi, and let's take another question. Um, this is regarding from Antonio in downtown San Jose, meat shortage. He is concerned about the meat shortage. Apparently, at some local stores, uh, there is not to create a pa- uh, panic or anything. But I guess that's a concern now, that the shortages in, in, uh, what you can buy at the, at the meat counter are, are different these days for some stores. Can you speak to that supervisor Cortezi?
Yes, yes, I can. It is, um, the meat shortage is real, it is, uh, it is a supply chain issue, and it's not because there's been so much demand for meat that we're running out of it. It's because there has been outbreaks of, of COVID nineteen in, um, some of the packing plants. Um, you know, what we used to call, well, let's just call it meatpacking plants.
Meat, uh-huh, yes.
And, um, and because of that, you know, they have to do the same thing. If there's a, if there's an outbreak and you have twenty loyal employees in that meatpacking house that are getting, you know, tons and tons of meat, um, or pounds of it and tons of it out every day, and fifteen out of twenty of them get infected, you, you're, you're basically shut down. And
Right.
you know, the, the inspectors are gonna come in and shut you down. That's a business that's literally regulated daily by health inspectors. Um, and, you know, that's been happening, unfortunately, across the country, and it's shut down some pretty big, uh, meatpacking operations throughout the country. So, uh, as a result, all of a sudden, you know, you stop seeing meat in your, in your grocery store, um, at the meat counter. And we aren't sure how long that's gonna continue. But again, I wanna make it clear, that's not because of government regulation, that's not because the health official has said, no meat. Um, you know, it's because this is how vicious this virus is, you know. Two weeks ago, we didn't have this problem, and now all of a sudden, um, you know, you've got massive, um, clusters, you know, going on in, in meatpacking plants and enough to, you know, to really scare people at, at the federal, state and local level in terms of how can those meatpacking operations operate? What kind of protocols do they have to operate under, you know, to, to be safe? Um, obviously, nobody wants infected meat coming out to the stores, and I'm not saying it is. But I'm telling you that right, at this point, the problem is the workers themselves are, are, are out of commission. They're
Right.
They're out on sick leave, and if they're out on sick leave, you're just not gonna see meat going on, onto freight cars and getting shipped out here.
Correct, and talking about the hotspots, that, that was just ironic. That was a hotspot for them, it's unfortunate, and you're right. They just, they, just for, I guess, lots of reasons. They, they weren't protected and, uh, and, and on and on. And so, yeah, there's a shortage there. But I, from what I understand, reading the newspaper, that chicken and fish and everything else is great. So, if you can't get your favorite steak maybe right now or ribs or something, you can always get something else. And then, you know, that, that will be, I'm sure, uh, you know, they're taking steps to, to rectify that and to make sure everyone's ba- healthy and, and back on board soon.
My friends down at the Zen Center, um, are all vegetarian. They'll be very happy that
(laughing)
there's a limit on reproduction right now. But, you know, it's, it's just like air quality is better, um, the roads are not congested, and there's a lot of interesting things going on that, that we're learning about ourselves. But it's still, it's still tragic that, you know, we're having to see so many people go through so much grief and victimized.
Yeah.
Um, because what we're learning, or what is happening around us, whether it's good or bad, as I said at the outset of this program, is, is really caused by a very vicious pandemic right now, and it's not to be taken lightly.
Right, agreed. And this is from Jacenia. This is a call that came through. She said, um, she was very happy to hear that the drive-ins are now open, or the Capital Drive-In in San Jose is going to open up. And, uh, which I thought was very exciting too, when I read that, that in the paper today. And, um, she wanted to know if they're open, if there's any, I guess the protocol, they said, were just to keep your mask on and you could use their restrooms and so on, uh, but that they, the snack shacks were closed, I guess the, and so bring your own snacks to the drive-in. But what do you think of that supervisor Cortezi? That's kind of good news.
That is kind of good news. Um, and I, I mean, it's a good thing. It really is a good thing, in my pe- I'm just gonna give you my opinion.
Mm-hmm.
You know, when, I'll date myself, you know, when we were younger and you went to a drive-in, you had to grab a speaker that was hooked onto a wire that was
True.
full, and you put it inside your car and roll the window up and you touched a lot, you touched a lot of stuff that other people were touching, you know. Um, but now, you know, it's, you, you turn your radio on, you get the sound, you don't really have to get out of your car. You can bring your own popcorn if you want. And, you know, there, it sounds like they have enough protocols. Again, it's a pretty easy business to put protocols in place, right? Stay in your car, wear a mask.
True.
Get rid of people in the car next to you. They keep the cars, um, ten feet apart, which is pretty good. That's like
Oh, that's great.
at least one parking space separate from each other, so people aren't gonna get out of their cars and just bump into each other. And they're keeping the restrooms open, but they're not keeping anything else open. So bring your sanitizer with you if you go. Um, make sure, you know, make sure, make sure you're using it, and, and stay in your own car and, and just get in and get out and go home. And it's, it's a good way for people to lose some of the cabin fever. Um, as much as we love our homes, you know, we need to get out.
Absolutely, and our children.
Our children need to get out, they need entertainment. Um, you know, we don't wanna give that up. And, and I commend, you know, the, the drive-ins for figuring out a way to, to do business, you know, that fits within the rules and keeps people, uh, safe and healthy. But remember, the public has to play by the rules. It, it, you know, the quickest way to see the drive-in shut down again is just like the meatpacking plants. If people go there and they, um, you know, and they just flaunt the rules and they start standing around, you know, having a beer with each other in the parking lot, and people start getting sick, uh, next thing you know, there's not gonna be any more drive-ins again because the public health officer's not gonna go for that. So, it, it is, all of this requires the cooperation of people in this community, one neighbor at a time. The public health official's not saving us. Uh, we're either saving ourselves or we're not.
Mm-hmm, right, by paying attention and following the rules and being respectful of one another, wearing your masks, social distancing. Yeah, I agree. Um, I, I think, you know, from what I've seen in, in my, uh, you know, small view of the world over here, I've seen people that are really taking it pretty seriously, so that's good. I, and I haven't heard or seen or read anything about, um, people, except for, I guess, on really warm days when they go to the beach. Um, but even then, I think it sounds like what people are doing is trying to keep social distancing, you know, six, six feet apart. Um, but I know that they've closed the beaches and the parks for those reasons, so that people aren't tempted to go and hang out in, in masks. And that's smart, because we do wanna err on the side of caution, as you said earlier, um, keeping, um, with the protocols that we can, um, get out of this faster if we, if, if we're doing this now, doing the hard work now.
Yes, whatever progress we've made, and we've made, certainly made some, um, we certainly, you know, even as tragic as the, as the deaths are that we've had and the number of infections that we've had and the number of people that have suffered in ICU units, it is still a fraction of what we would have had had people not done what you just said, Belinda, had people not cooperated. And, um, the way we're gonna get out of it, yes, we're gonna have new protocols, we're gonna learn to do things different. We're gonna learn to go to the drive-in ten feet apart. Um, but we're also, we're also gonna beat this by abiding, you know, by complying, by cooperating with what the medical execs, experts are telling us to do because they're really the only ones that know how to sort of starve this virus out. Um, this virus can't, you know, it can't function very well without victims, you know, to, to jump to. Think of it almost like a parasite, right?
Sure, sure.
One person to another, then it has nowhere to go. So, this is, this is what we need to do, is disrupt that ability of the virus, um, to hopscotch around from person to person. And that's the only reason the public health official keeps doing the shelter stuff because she wants us, uh, you know, to, to put a barrier between, between our ability, between this virus's ability to get to us or not.
Right, and it's, so supervisor Cortezi, is it realistic that you think things will open up for us in Santa Clara County on June first? Or do you think we may get another request to stay in shelter in place for another thirty days? What is it, what are you kind of hearing, um, in your circles?
I'm not hearing a lot because Sarah Cody doesn't say a lot about that. Yesterday at the board of supervisors meeting, she said that, you know, even her own family members are asking her, what, what is the date? What is the date? And she says, I don't know, I don't know. So, um, so she's, she's, I think she really doesn't know. And I don't think she really has a target. But we do have indicators, and the indicators are, um, you know, when, when the incidence of infection, um, flattens out and we're close to that, it's really slowed down a lot. Um, when we have testing available to everyone who needs it, and we're getting closer to that, as I said earlier on the show tonight, we've opened up a few more testing centers and we'll keep opening them up. Um, when, um, uh, when we have, when we know that we have, uh, a flattening of the use of ICU beds and they're starting to free up those beds, so we aren't gonna get overrun by a surge, then I think she's gonna feel a lot more aggressive about creating some more opportunities for businesses to open, whether they're, um, you know, hair salons, or whether they're child, more childcare centers, or if they're, you know, uh, maybe even schools, you know. Maybe the rule's gonna be, you can have schools open, but you cannot, um, you know, let, you have to keep children in separate cohorts and separate groups of fifteen to thirty, so that they're not, you know, cross-contaminating, so to speak, in terms of transmission. My belief is this, by June first, there's gonna be, if we continue to do the good work we do as a community, keeping this curve flat, then I think the public health officer is gonna start looking at backing, backing us off of shelter in place. And remember how we got here. We started off, and she said, infections and deaths are starting to happen here. We need to, you know, we need to ban groups over a thousand. And then a few days later, she said, we need to reduce that to a hundred because the infections are still spiking. And then she said ten, and then she said zero. And we've talked about this before. I think by June first, she's going to be seriously looking at, how do we start ratcheting that back the other way? How do we say, now we can have ten in a room, or now we can have a hundred in a room? And then eventually, we'll get back to a thousand, in more than a thousand. And the reason for that is, is because they, they need to see what happens as they open things back up, um, you know, i- in an incremental way. That's my belief. I always believe, you know, if you're, you think of it as I always believe, you know, if you're, I think of it as, as somebody who's taken a deep, a deep hike into the woods, and, you know, if they go left, they could get lost; if they go right, they could get lost; if they keep going deeper into the woods, they could get lost. But if they turn around and just retrace their steps back the way they came, they won't get lost, they'll end up coming back home. And I think that's what, I believe that's what she will do, starting June first, is she's going to start bringing us, you know, down the same, back down the same path we came, and start increasing the number of people that can group up together, which would mean no more shelter in place. Um, and, and then, you know, at the same time, opening up some businesses that, that are probably very low risk to open up right now. Um, car dealers, if you take that example. We're already bringing our cars to car dealers for repairs. We've been doing that for the last seven weeks. How much more of a leap of faith is it to say that you can also walk around in the showroom, um, under certain conditions? You know, maybe there, maybe there shouldn't be more than ten people in a showroom at a time, maybe five. I don't know. The car dealers need to help, help us figure that out and help them-
It's so interesting, yes, you're right. It, it, it's every sector of the community. I have three questions from Jeffrey, Beth, and Barb, and let me give them to you, so, yeah, so you can answer these. Okay, Jeffrey from San Martino's asking about, um, says, "How is our Santa Clara County economy's doing, status doing compared to other California counties, to other fifty-seven California counties?" Yeah, he's right, we have fifty-eight counties in, in California.
Well, as you know, we generally do the, the, better by far than any of the other fifty-seven counties on a per capita basis. We have the highest productivity per person, per capita of, um, of any county in the world, and we're always in the top three in the world of metropolitan areas in terms of per capita economic production. So, that's the good news. That means we're probably still doing better than a lot of counties in California, because they've all been sheltered. The bad news is, we, you know, the, the, they used to have a saying when I was a kid, uh, "The bigger you are, the harder you fall." And, you know, the problem is that when you go to thirty percent unemployment, you know, robust, uh, economy like this, um, where you employ virtually a hundred percent of your population normally, your working population, um, thirty percent unemployment is huge. We've already lost-
It is, sure.
Over two hundred thousand jobs or more have already been lost in Silicon Valley-
Wow, oh, my gosh.
...in a quarter, just in seven weeks.
Oh, no question.
So, so it's hard to compare. You know, if you look at Colusa County, or Stanislaw County, or Toolumne County, I mean, how do you even compare us to them? Um, they have, they had twenty percent unemployment before this started, you know?
Right.
And, and they're devastated, and we're starting to be devastated. The big impact is going to be not only on, you know, employment, but believe it or not, on the county and the cities themselves. We have fifteen cities in Santa Clara County, as well as our county government. The county's budget last year was eight billion, with a B.
Wow.
We have twen-, the county has twenty-two thousand employees, forty departments and agencies. It is oftentimes the largest employer in Silicon Valley on any given day, depending on how the tech sector is doing. We are already, we're already facing a four hundred and fifty million dollar deficit, almost half a billion dollars, for this coming year, just because of COVID. So then what happens? How do we protect those public sector jobs, those county jobs? How do we, how do we deliver services? You know, how do we provide, uh, help for our community-based partners? Um, so, you know, how do cities pay for police officers and firefighters?
Right.
This is where it starts to get scary, um, in addition to the hardship on the people who are unemployed. So, it's, it's, um, it is shaping up as a perfect storm, and it's not going to be fun for any of us, um, including those of us in elective office who are trying to balance these budgets.
Okay, um, yeah, and we just have a few minutes left, just a few. So let's, um, yeah, I, I, I want to comment on these, and, and, but I, but I'm not going to. Um, but let's see, uh, Beth is asking about Supervisor Cortezzi, uh, "What do you think about the resurgence in Santa Clara?" Um, I guess maybe she means resurgence in, in cases of COVID-19? I'm not sure. She just says, "What do you think about the resurgence in Santa Clara?" She's, uh, from San Jose.
Yeah, and I, and I'm taking your cue to give shorter answers.
Yes, thank you, Beth.
I give, I give long answers, I'm sorry, but, um-
No, it's good, thank you.
I, I know if you go on the Public Health Department website, SCCPhD.org, you'll see a city-by-city set of, um, data or statistics. And there has, there have been some surges in certain areas, and I do think City of Santa Clara may be one of those, um, but also because, you know, a, a big surge has been in nursing homes. And if, if those all, if those happen, and just happen to be, those clusters happen to happen in a certain city, like Santa Clara, or, or any other city, Sunnyvale, Milpitas, whatever, you're going to see a pretty good surge in their overall numbers.
Right.
So, what I can tell you is, right now, the biggest percentage of surge that we've been seeing is, is suddenly with the older population, particularly those people who are in, um, congregate care.
Right, okay. And, uh, thank you. And Barb has our final question of the night. She's asking about, uh, she's in the New Almeden, uh, yeah, New Almeden area, and she's asking, "If people are having a barbecue, how parties are ten, uh, ten or more, do, do they care?"
Yeah.
And that, we answered that last week, too. You answered that last week, Supervisor Cortezzi, in just, just one minute that we have left on, on the clock here.
Yes, first of all, I love you all in New Almeden, what a great little community that is, but let me, I hate to tell you that under the current orders, um, shelter in place means only your family. You can't even have a barbecue or a dinner party with ten other people, even if you know them well. That's the law right now.
Mm-hmm.
And they will enforce it, it, you know, if, if you're reported. So, hang in there, um, keep the barbecue bit covered until, you know, until June first, or until the public health officer says we can start, you know, having back our barbecues again. And I hope that comes by June first, because I got a birthday shortly after.
Yeah.
I would certainly love to be among you celebrating.
Oh, happy birthday, Supervisor Cortezzi, happy birthday. Okay, well, we want to, thank you so much for all of those quick responses. I, I know it's hard to get it all in, we, we really need another hour. Um, we're going to give the website, uh, for Supervisor Cortezzi, SCCgov.org, um, and that's, oh, that's Santa Clara County website. So the, your website is SupervisorCortezzi.org, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, very good. And then your direct line is four zero eight two nine nine fifty thirty, if anyone wants to call. Again, if you, if you reach out to us, uh, on our website, we'll give you all of Supervisor Cortezzi's information and more at KCXUCOVID19.org. And if you want to hear the radio program, the town hall, um, again, that we just completed last week or the week before, you certainly can, you just, uh, check on Radio Town Hall Live. We've got, just got a few minutes left, Supervisor Cortezzi. We'd like to end on a happy note, as you know, and we'd like to ask you, what's making you happy this week?
Uh-huh. What, what's making me happy is the beautiful weather.
Uh, yes.
It, it strikes me, um, as I finish a long day like this and go out sometimes for a walk around sunset, um, that there's one thing the virus can't take away, and it's, you know, this beautiful California weather, beautiful California sunsets, and just a beautiful California atmosphere out there. So I hope, you know, I, I know you aren't asking me a COVID question, but that makes me very, very happy, and, um, I hope other people enjoy it as well.
Oh, that's lovely, yes, and you're right. And in California, um, you know, we're lucky, we're blessed to have such beautiful weather most of the time, most of the year, so that's good. And, okay, thank you Supervisor Cortezzi, thank you for being part of our live Radio Town Hall program. I want to tell you what's making me happy, and it's this beautiful poem by Nancy Langstock Krakauer, uh, from Pleasanton. It was in the, um, the newspaper, and it's called Twenty Twenty Vision. I'm going to read this poem to you, and it, 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 it's just, it's a beautiful, uh, creative piece that this woman did, and I just, I don't know her, but I just want to read it to you, it's beautiful. It's called Twenty Twenty Vision. "No one could protect the measurable, no one could predict the meas-, in measurable fear provoked by a virus that's in, that's the same name as beer. A headache, a fever, a cough, and a sneeze, an invisible bug brought the world to its knees. The life as we knew it is no longer there. The streets are deserted and shelves are quite bare. The stadiums are silent, all sports are on hold, the Olympics are postponed, no competing for gold. The theaters are empty, the stage, stage lights are dim, bars and restaurants are shut down, and so is the gym. The stores have all shuttered, malls now ghostly halls. A walk in the park requires new protocols. Once bustling cities now contain empty squares, all places of worship, they don't have a prayer. Vacations are canceled, all business trips seized, the borders between countries are strictly policed. All meetings are taboo, all classes dismissed, things taken for granted no longer exist. No weddings, no funerals, no birthdays, no proms. Graduations, celebrations could all cause us harm. Millions lost livelihoods just overnight. Uncertainty looms with no ending in sight. Our arms remain empty, too dangerous to hug, so near yet so far from the ones that we love. So many have suffered, so many have died, our anxieties and fears have all amplified. But the air is much cleaner, there are fewer car fumes, smoke stacks, stacks from factories have paused, spewing plumes. Less traffic on freeways, less cruise ships on seas, the planet's pollution is starting to ease. The beaches have less trash, the skies turning bluer, our rivers and oceans are less of a sewer. We've been forced to slow down and examine our lives, spend times with our children, our husbands and wives. We value our friends and reach out to them more, including the neighbors that live right next door. A word, a world once divided has now become one. To conquer an enemy that affects everyone. No sex, no religion, nationality, or race is immune from this virus that's invaded our space. It took Mother Nature to force us to pause and ponder the havoc our actions have caused. Gave us time to acknowledge our precious world's worth and decide what to do to preserve Planet Earth. Perhaps this disease is our gift in disguise to make humans more humane and prevent our demise." And that's by Nancy Langstock Krakauer from Pleasanton. I hope I'm pronouncing her last name correct, correctly. K-R-A-K-A-U-E-R, Krakauer. But that's a beautiful, brilliant, um, piece of art there, her poem. And we want to thank you from KCXU. We're going to hit our timelines now. Supervisor Cortezzi, are there any last thoughts you'd like to share?
No, just thank you very much. Thank you for sharing the beautiful poem, and thank you to all the listeners for, uh, checking in tonight and for doing your part.
Very good, yes, thank you. And Supervisor Cortezzi, we look forward to working with you again.